Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Ogun, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Palacios, and Senator Tom Ada for being here early so we can vote. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Sergeant at arms, please make phone calls to the members to please come. Five minutes to four, we're voting at four o'clock. I'd like to thank the following senators for being here this afternoon. Senator Panglinen, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Ogun, Senator Espaldon, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Rory Rispicio, Senator Calvo, Senator Guthardts. We're missing a couple more, two more. Senator Rispicio, you're recognized in the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, now with standing the House rose, I move that we proceed all the way to the voting file and that we give you the flexibility to call upon which bills are ready to be voted on and that we just allow you to do that as the bills have been photocopied so we can be efficient and get on with the voting and the legislative business.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Okay. So, does everybody understand that motion? Okay, so you have before you a set of bills and I will be calling out the numbers then. So, the first would be Resolution 160-30 COR.
Resolution number 160-30 COR is amended on the floor, introduced by F. F. Blas Jr., T. R. Munia Barnes, Judith T. Wampat, E. D. D., and others, relative to demanding that the United States Congress acknowledge the sacrifices of the people of Guam and to grant Guam full voting rights in the United States House of Representatives for all matters relating to and affecting Guam and the military buildup on Guam and for hearings to be conducted on Guam on legislation that relates to and affect Guam and the military buildup on Guam.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ada? Twice, twice, yeah, yeah. Senator Ogun? Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes.
Madam Speaker, I move that Senator Tenorio be excused from all votes taken today. And Senator Vice Speaker Cruz. Huh? You can ask.
They're both off, they're both off island.
Oh, he's off i- well, the Vice Speaker, we know he's off island and Senator Tenorio's off island as well.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Resolution number 160-30 COR received thirteen yays and two excused absences. Resolution number 160-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 162-30 COR.
Bill number 162-30 COR has substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizen and amended on the floor, introduced by Ray Tenorio, E. J. B. Calvo, Adofu B. Palacios Sr., an act to add a new article to Chapter 20 of Title I Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of an online warrant repository registry.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen? Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. It is? Oh, yes, page three.
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Yes, please, state your point of order.
Thank you, I rise to point of order. Senator Panglinen pointed out that the bill's missing one page, so I move to reconsider the actions of the body on taking the vote on Bill 162-30 and that then we just defer this bill until they correct it and gross copy can be provided to us.
Do you want to instead put it in the bottom?
Just erase the vote that was taken and then allow you to call in the next bill and then we'll come back to this bill when it's ready.
Okay, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 272-30.
Bill number 272-30 LS has substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary and further substituted and amended on the floor, introduced by F. B. Ogun Jr., an act to add a new section 6233 to Article 2 of Chapter 6, Title I Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Division of Environmental Health of the Department of Public Health and Social Services and to be known as the Environmental Public Health Modernization and Revitalization Act of 2010.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yeah.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Substitute bill number 272-30 LS received thirteen yays and two excused absences. Substitute bill number 272-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 305-30.
Bill number 305-30 COR has substituted by the Committee on Tourism, Cultural Affairs, Youth, and Public Broadcasting and amended on the floor, introduced by B. J. F. Cruz, T. R. Munia Barnes, Telo Titergreen, an act to add a new section 85A to Title V Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Guam Masters Award to recognize and masters, practitioners of Guam's traditional and folk arts.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yeah.
Senator Palacios?
How about this bill?
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yeah.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes.
Point of order, Madam Speaker?
Please state your point of order.
Madam Speaker, our photocopy machine seems to be hungry today. It seems to be clipping some of these pages and so when these bills are not photocopied, it's missing a page or two, so I make the same motion to reconsider the actions of the body on this vote and that you set this bill aside until such time you deem that it's, it's ready to be presented and voted on.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Three, five, zero. Three fifty, Bill 350? -30 COR, can the clerk read the title?
Bill number 350-30 COR.
Bill number 350-30 COR, introduced by V. C. Panglinen, B. J. F. Cruz, an act to repeal Section 30106C of Chapter 30, Title 11 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to exemptions from hotel occupancy taxes.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yeah.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Bill number 350-30 COR received thirteen yay votes and two excused absences. Bill number 350-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number, I mean, resolution number 356-30.
Resolution number 356-30 LS, introduced by R. J. Rispicio, Judith T. Wampat, E. D. D., Judith P. Guthardts, D. P. A., and others, relative to expressing the support of Mina Trenta and Elizabetta Turenguahan, the 30th Guam Legislature, for the joint application of Continental Airlines and Continental Marquinesha to the United States Department of Transportation, U.S. DOT, relative to their February 16, 2010, request to provide nonstop service from their airline hub in Guam and in their airline hub in Newark to Japan's Haneda International Airport, which is the closest international airfield to Tokyo's Business District.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Sure we got the right number?
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Resolution number 356-30 received thirteen yay votes and two excused absences. Resolution number 356-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 360-30.
Bill number 360-30 COR, introduced by TC Ada, R. J. Rispicio, an act to add a new subsection E to Section 7160 and to add new, a new subsection F to Section 7161 of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, to add a new subsection D to Section 51506, Chapter 51, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 7120.2E of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, as amended by Public Law 30-115, relative to the motor vehicle registration and license plate fees for veterans rated at a 100% disability or individual unemployability.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yeah.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Everybody wants, yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Bill number 360-30 received thirteen yays and two excused absences. Bill number 360-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 320-30.
Bill number 320-20 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. C. Panglinen, TC Ada, an act to amend Sections 8502C, 2, and 3 of Article 5 and Section 8312 of Article 3 of Chapter 8, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to net metering.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Oh, God.
Speaker Wampat? Yes. Bill number 320-30 received thirteen yay votes and two excused absences. Bill number 320-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 370-30.
Bill number 370-30 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. C. Panglinen, Judith P. Guthardts, D. P. A., Judith T. Wampat, E. D. D., an act to amend Sections 60112 of Article 1, Division 2, of Chapter 60, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the land for the landless program.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
The other one needed over.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Senator Titergreen? Senator Titergreen? Bill number 370-30 received thirteen yay votes, two excused absences. Bill number 370-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 371-30.
Bill number 371-30 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. C. Panglinen, Judith P. Guthardts, D. P. A., TC Ada.
No, TCA, second and third.
Oh, okay. Introduced by V. C. Panglinen, TC Ada, and Judith P. Guthardts. An act to amend Section 11 of Public Law 30-101, relative to the appropriation to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Bill number 371-30 received thirteen yay votes and two excused absences. Bill number 371-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 366-30.
Bill number 366-30 COR, has substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary and amended on the floor, introduced by TC Ada. An act to amend Section 29 of Public Law 30-101, relative to including a waiver of immunity for the 30 million short-term note to be issued by the Guam Waterworks Authority, GWA.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Aye.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Aye.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes.
Yes. Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen? Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Senator Espaldon? Substitute bill number 366-30 received thirteen yay votes and two excused absences. Substitute bill number 366-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 365-30.
Bill number 365-30 COR, has substituted by the Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary and amended in the Committee of the whole, introduced by TC Ada. An act to amend Section 4 of Public Law 28-71, relative to approving the terms and conditions of the issuance of Guam Waterworks Authority Revenue Bonds.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Ogun?
Aye.
Senator Blas? Did you say pass? Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthardts?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yeah.
Senator Panglinen?
Yeah.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Titergreen?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Yes. Senator Blas? Senator Espaldon? Senator?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator?
Substitute bill number three sixty-five dash thirty received thirteen ye votes and two excused absences. Substitute bill number three sixty-five is duly passed by this body. Bill number three sixty-eight dash thirty?
Bill number three sixty-eight dash thirty COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by Frank V. Agun Jr., TC Ada, Adolph B. Palacios Sr. An act relative to approving the terms and conditions of the issuance by Guam Power Authority, GPA, of revenue bonds to finance the local matching portion of the cost of the Smart Grid project, to fund certain other generation, transmission and distribution projects, to fund the costs of an administration building, to refund specific outstanding GPA bonds, and to approve the terms and conditions of the issuance by Guam Power Authority of subordinate revenue bonds, to fund certain reserves and refund its outstanding obligations relating to its commercial paper program.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Bill number three sixty-eight dash thirty received thirteen ye votes and two absent -- excuse absence. Bill number three sixty-eight dash thirty is duly passed by this body. Bill number three forty-nine dash thirty?
Bill number three forty-nine dash thirty COR, a substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, and amended on the floor, introduced by TR Munia Barnes, Tele Tid agree, Judith T. Wampat EDD, and others. An act to add a new section eight zero one zero five C, Chapter eighty of Title twenty-one Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of properties under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes. Substitute bill number three forty-nine dash thirty received thirteen ye's and two excused absences. Bill number three forty-eight dash thirty is duly passed by this body.
Three forty-nine, did I say that? I'm sorry? Bill number three eighty-two dash thirty?
Three eighty-two.
Three eighty-two.
Bill number three eight two dash thirty LS as amended on the floor, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, TR Munia Barnes. An act to add a new section eight zero one zero five D to Chapter eighty of Title twenty-one Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of properties under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
One moment, I think.
Madam Speaker, I can rise -- oh, yeah, I just rise to point of order, I move that this bill be passed in the voting fountain, again, you deem it's ready to be presented and voted on by the body.
Okay, on that motion, and without any objections, order.
Bill number three zero four dash thirty?
Bill number three zero four dash thirty COR, a substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, and further substituted on the floor, introduced by Adolph B. Palacios Sr. An act to add a new subsection G to Section five five one zero two, Chapter fifty-five, Division three, Title ten, the Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section five point five five G of Chapter five, Title eight, Guam Code Annotated, relative to including the criminal investigation supervisor, tax investigators, assistant tax investigators, compliance inspection supervisor, and compliance inspectors of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and the entomologists and the commodity inspectors of the Department of Agriculture, and the compensation of public safety and law enforcement officers.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Aye.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes. No.
two excused absences. Substitute bill number three oh four dash thirty is duly passed by this body. Bill number one eighty-seven dash thirty?
Bill number one eighty-seven dash thirty COR, a substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement and Land, introduced by Judith T. Wampat EDD, and TR Munia Barnes. An act to zone the previously on-zone lot number two four three six seven in the municipality of Mangila to C Zone.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Senator TC Ada?
Aye.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Aye.
Substitute bill number one eighty-seven dash thirty receive twelve ye's, one nay vote, and two excused absences. Bill number one eighty-seven dash thirty is duly passed by this body. Bill number three zero five dash thirty? Three zero five.
Bill number three zero five dash thirty COR, a substituted by the Committee on Tourism, Cultural Affairs, Youth and Public Broadcasting, and amended on the floor, introduced by BJF Cruz, TR Munia Barnes, and Tele Tid agree. An act to add a new Chapter eighty-five eight to Title five Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the Guam Masters Award to recognize master practitioners of Guam's traditional and folk arts.
You know, I was just gonna say that, we have talked a lot about this here.
because they're on the --
What does chewing gum have to do with not getting a copy of the bill?
Senator TC Ada?
Yes.
Senator VA Ada?
Yes ma'am.
Senator Agun?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Senator Calvo?
Aye.
Senator Cruz?
Yes.
Senator Espaldon?
Yes.
Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Yes.
Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangalinen?
Yes.
Senator Rispecio?
Yes.
Senator Tid agree?
Yes.
Senator Tenorio?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Bill number three zero five dash thirty receive thirteen ye votes and two excused absences.
Yes.
Bill number three zero five is duly passed by this body. Bill number three seventy-six dash thirty?
Bill number?
It was just handed to me then, okay. No? Oh, okay, ignore.
Three oh four?
Yes.
Motion?
Have you voted on everything already?
Yes. I mean, the ones that at least that we've received so far.
Madam Speaker?
Three one six?
No, not yet. No, not yet.
That was adopted last week. Was passed last week.
Last week. Senator Rispicio, an emotion for three forty.
Thank you, Madam, uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I ask the body's consideration and support to pull Resolution 340-30 from the voting file to the top of the second reading file, and I would like to offer an amendment.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that we, so we're at the second reading now?
So, no motion to go to second?
Yeah, I move that we go, we suspend any further activity on the voting file if there are any, and that we go back to the top of the voting, second reading file.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As, as we know, Resolution 340 attempts to, and this is building upon the efforts of our chairperson, the Ethics and Standard Committee, and every single member of that committee, Bill, Resolution 340, Madam Speaker, seeks to put the, um, the rules and regulations for the Committee on Ethics and Standard into the standing rules, and I want to ask the body's consideration, Senator Guthertz, in conjunction with the Minority Council, and our Majority Council has developed language because they, they were able to point out for us, Madam Speaker, that if we adopted the rules, anyone will be able to just submit any kind of complaint to the legislature without having the complaint be in writing or signed by the complainant, and so basically, if we don't adopt this amendment, there'll be really no standard to which these complaints will be officially presented to yourself or to the Chair of the Ethics Committee, and so I think after what we've been through in this last ethics hearing, we want to really make sure that the complaints that this body receives have some kind of basis and have some kind of standard, and this amendment that Senator Guthertz is moving would provide that standard and would meet that threshold so that we don't receive any kind of complaints and then not have it verified, and that's what this amendment attempts to do. It says complaints must be in writing and signed by the complainant, complaints and information about senators and employees of the legislature must be verified as true or that the complainant believes them to be true under penalty of perjury under the laws of Guam, and we think, Madam Speaker, as a body, if we adopt this, that anyone who submits a complaint to the Ethics and Stand, the Committee on Ethics and Standard should be at least willing to put their name and sign under penalty of perjury that, that they believe that what they're claiming as an allegation is true, and without this amendment, we have no standard and no basis to which these complaints can be addressed appropriately. So I ask for the body's consideration in putting this on page nine, lines four to six, those, delete those things and add the following language instead.
On the amendment, Senator Pangalina, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I certainly understand the, what we're trying to do here, but I do want to caution, and I feel a little uncomfortable given just having read the amendment right now, that we're placing the standard so much that it really discourages and inhibits individuals who may want to present something before the legislative body about conduct that may not be appropriate by members of this body. Given, given this, it's kind of, you know, you have to be upfront, you kind of have to do your own investigation before you put something forward, and I think the process, at least when, when I work within the process, we had was you submit, we would receive any complaint at all, and it would be the committee's responsibility to determine if the information contained with the, in the complaint, if they were true, would constitute a breach of the standards and conducts of either the ethics rules of this body or laws of the territory of Guam. So we didn't really need to have the individual make that determination before he submits it, so now, it's kind of like, you gotta be almost unquestionably, uh, it, it's just that the standard now for just the initial submission is so high that really, we may not be fair and subjecting ourselves to, or providing opportunity for the public to present this. I really think that there's gotta be, the screening has to occur in the body and in the, in the, within the, the committee, rather than it has to be almost pre-screened before you bring it forward and even look at it, so, again, you know, if you just say, if you take a look at information that's provided to you, and then you make the decision, the body doesn't make that public, it doesn't become public, it only becomes public and you move forward to, after you've determined by the members of the body that if the information contained were to be true, then it would constitute a violation of the Code of Ethics and the laws of the territory of Guam, and then you move forward to the public phase of the process, but to, it almost presupposes that every complaint needs to be a valid complaint in order to be received by this body, and I don't think that's the, for, for me, I think that almost discourages members of the public from bringing forth issues that may, in their mind, in their understanding, be, should be of a concern to this body of the actions of its members, so that's the only little sense of discomfort I have on this, and I guess I need to ferret it out a little bit more in my own mind before making a decision on this, but I do understand, you know, the need to protect members of this body, but in doing so, I don't think we want to be discouraging also information to be provided to the members of this body and the Committee on Ethics and Standards on when people of Guam have questions on the actions of, of the members of the legislature. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Senator Palacios on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I share the sentiments of the previous speaker with respect to the comments made. If you look at page nine, beginning actually on line three, the forms of complaint, there the complaint must be in writing and signed by the complainant, and I think that that is sufficient. I think that this body should assume the burden of having to verify certain information. I am sure that it takes really a courage by an individual to come and file a complaint against a member of this body or an employee of this branch of government, and I think that with the amendment, I think it would, it would serve to inhibit really the, the desire to come and report misconduct, and even if there is no evidence, I, I think that when there's smoke, there probably might be fire, and so it's worth checking, and to me, I think this, this is not necessary in lieu, in light of the page nine, rule number eight, forms of complaint, and so, again, I, I, I don't see really the need for the amendment, other than really, it would diminish, it would actually reduce the expression of dissatisfaction of service by this, by anyone from this legislative branch of government, and we will see, I'll sit and listen, but personally, I think that is not necessary, the amendment. I'm not objecting, I'm just, I'll express my, my views when it comes to voting. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. On the amendment, I have Senator Guthertz, Agun, and then Calvo. Senator Guthertz, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I think what brought this about.
Can you please make sure your mic is on?
Yes, it's on. I think what brought this about really is the lines four to six on page nine states that complaints must be in writing and signed by the complainant, that's fine, complainants and information about senators and employees of the legislature need not be verified or in any particular form. Now, this sort of is open-ended, need not be verified, meaning anybody can file a complaint about anybody without having any basis, in fact. Could be a malicious complaint, it could be a political complaint, it could be harassment complaint, so I think what, what we're looking at here is to find a happy medium to emphasize just how serious it is when someone files a complaint, that they also need to take some ownership of what they're doing and, and have some basis for their action. Perhaps to ally the concerns of my colleagues, and this was suggested by one of our colleagues, perhaps all we need to do is, on the proposed amendment, put a period after the word "true" and delete everything else after that. That's on the third from the last line on the amendment. Must be verified and true, and then delete everything that comes after that.
So the amendment, you're substituting the amendment, verified as true, period. Well, it's an amendment to the amendment.
Yeah.
So on the, now, this is a whole, we're, we're going now.
Or it must be verifiable. Must be verifiable.
Okay, so you're saying then that after what must be, must be verifiable, period.
Yeah.
Or must be verified?
Verifiable.
Verifiable. Period.
Yeah.
On the Guthertz amendment, it's an amendment to the amendment.
No, that's a word, that's a word, verifiable. Why?
Senators, I'm gonna have to take a brief recess on this one. Senators, I'm gonna have to take a brief recess on this one.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
No, not yet.
No.
We've...
Guys, can you please check on your desk?
With Senator Guthers on an amendment to an amendment.
And Speaker, I'm going to withdraw my amendment to the amendment, thank you.
On that amendment, on that motion then to withdraw your amendment to the original amendment without any objections, you order the individuals that I have on the list to speak with Senator Agun, but no more? Senator Cavill. Senator Cavill on the original amendment by Senator Respecho.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support, again, of the amendment proffered by the Majority Leader. Madam Speaker, the concern I have is, again, our legislative body is... There is no executive session where we can go into and have a discussion, and as ludicrous or as outlandish the complaint may be, it is kept within the bounds of an executive session by, based on the standing rules, and of course I don't have it in front of me, but all meetings are public. And with this public meeting, if you set the litmus test from the very beginning where with that complainant has, has, will verify, will place an affidavit that under perjury that this accusation is correct, then at least at the doorstep, before it gets to that hearing, the, there is something there to at least hold someone accountable for a malicious act. Madam Speaker, I believe that this resolution is prudent. One can just look at, read the internet, the blogs, and unfortunately, in the game of politics, politics sometimes can get very, very dirty. Madam Speaker, I think this legislature has gone a long way in terms of building up, again, rules in regards to ethics, but again, I believe there must be some also accountability for those folks that do make a complaint in regards to the actions of members of this body. And I think it's wise and prudent that we have language in this, in this, in these rules, that if someone is to make a complaint, then they believe that complaint is true. And so, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this resolution, and I'm asking the members of this body for their support as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. On the Respecho amendment, Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to be able to say a few words. You know, when I'm looking at the resolution in its entirety, and I want to commend the sponsor of the overall resolution, but then looking also at the proposed amendment, the way it reads, just for the information of individuals out there in the community, it would be inserting the following phrase, "Complaints must be in writing and signed by the complainant." "Complaints and information about senators and employees of the legislature must be verified as true or that the complainant believes them to be true under penalty of perjury under the laws of Guam." I think, Madam Speaker, that any time that a complaint is being lodged towards either members of this body or any of the staff members, certainly the individual has to own up to that responsibility. If they're gonna file a complaint questioning the activities or the decisions or the actions of an individual, then certainly there has to be some sense of validity with that particular complaint. And what this would provide is basically that opportunity to say, hey, you're still open to, or excuse my expression, Madam Speaker, but to whoever would like to file a complaint, you are still open, you have that option to be able to file a complaint against any member of this body, or any member, staff member of this entire legislative body, but ensure that in fact it's verified as true, or that you believe them to be true. Otherwise, you will suffer the penalty of under perjury under the laws of Guam, penalty of perjury under the laws of Guam. And I think that that provides some sense of flexibility there, Madam Speaker, because if an individual were to file a complaint, then obviously he or she has not only have, does not only have to sign it and try to verify it, but believe that in fact it has some substance before it's actually filed. And you know, I bring this up, Madam Speaker, only because when you look at complaints being lodged towards individuals that work in this environment, a very extremely political environment, and then also members of this body, there really has to be a particular threshold of responsibility upon the individual that is to file that complaint. And I think that there's tremendous flexibility here, where in fact the complainant believes them to be true, that allows them to either understand that this is the circumstance that took place, they believe that in fact there are questionable decisions or actions as it relates to the complaint, and that they have that option to be able to file that complaint. So I stand in support of the amendment, Madam Speaker, knowing full well that there was a comment made a little earlier that perhaps it may discourage anyone from filing. I hope that should this amendment pass, that in no way does it discourage anyone from filing, but that any individual that does file a complaint to a member of the legislative branch, either the member of this body or staff members, that at least they can verify that in fact it has some substance and truth to it. Otherwise, it really perhaps may open the opportunity for individuals to just file complaints. I hate to use the word frivolous, but complaints that perhaps may have little or no substance to it, and could conceivably lead towards individuals' questions of integrity, questions of their character, when in fact, at the end of the day, when the committee conducts all of its necessary investigation, that there's absolutely no substance involved with that particular complaint. So I think that this puts the onus on both sides, not only the Ethics Committee, the attorney, being able to go through the investigatory process, but most importantly, it puts the onus on the individual filing a complaint, just to have some sense of assurance that you do believe, as an individual filing this complaint, that there is substance and there's truth to some form of the complaint that you're filing. So I stand in support of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Agun. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on the amendment? And I also like to offer then the author to close. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the discussion, and I hope really that it's not discourse, but rather a discussion that gets us to a point where we understand what I'm attempting to do here. In the current process right now, as it stands, if the resolution were to be passed without this amendment, this is exactly how it would happen. Someone can say Senator Smith is a habitual drunkard, so they put that in writing, they give it to yourself, the Speaker of the Legislature. I don't know if, have you ever had a Senator Smith in the Legislature? I'll just say Senator so-and-so, I don't recall a Senator Smith being a member of the Legislature, but... No, no, no. So anyway, somebody files a complaint against Senator so-and-so because they may be a habitual drunkard. They file that in writing with yourself or the committee on Ethics and Standards Chairperson. The committee on Ethics and Standards Chairperson will forward it to the committee council. The committee council will look at the complaint and not even begin to discuss the merits of those complaints, determine whether or not those merits, or they have any merits where it could be true. Basically, will look at the complaint and says, "Being a habitual drunkard is a violation of this rule of our standing rule," or this or that. He would refer that back to the chairperson. The chairperson, at any point in this process, can refer that to the media, say that we were in receipt of this complaint, this was the nature of the complaint, the Ethics Committee Chair has certified that if this complaint were true, it would be a violation of standing rule, maybe code of professional conduct, or whatever that council may determine. Then the chairperson would announce to the media that we're holding our first committee on Ethics Standards hearing on the following. And then when we come into that hearing, as a good senator from IT said, "There's nothing about us that's in behind closed doors," or "We always want to never go against the grain of being transparent and trying to let the media and the people know what we're doing every step of the way." As a matter of fact, Madam Speaker, the only way that we can go into executive session to address that complaint is if majority of the members of the Ethics Committee do so determine. And so, you know, I want to commend Senator Guthers and the members of the Ethics Committee when we just over, we just, we just addressed two very serious complaints against members of the Legislature. It was very difficult, because we're dealing with all the pressures of the media, pressures of the public, but we were bound by a set of rules. And so, the problem is, because our process is, and we're a legislative branch of government, where we have to be open and transparent, and I'm not arguing that we should never be open or transparent, I'm asking our colleagues, why should we hold ourselves to a different standard than maybe judicial officers? In the judiciary, when a complaint is filed against the member of the judge or justice, In the judiciary, when a complaint is filed against the member of the judge or justice, that complaint remains sealed until such time the panel is ready to discuss it openly. But in our case, my concern is that everything we do is highly charged because this is an extremely political environment, and we just have a situation where whatever is done against one of us, the media would love to get a hold of that, and I'm not arguing that they shouldn't. But what I'm arguing, Madam Speaker, is for our colleagues to think about what kind of rule we're establishing, not only for ourselves, but for future people who want to be members of the Legislature. The only reason why I agreed, and I thank you for appointing me to be on the Ethics Committee, is because I wanted to make sure that the process was above board and we provided some sense of credibility, that anyone who has a complaint against any member of the Legislature, that the Ethics Committee will dissolve, will resolve that, will dispose of that in a manner that's not to be like the court of public opinion, but it's really hard. It's really, really hard to guarantee that the complaint that's filed against a member of the Legislature or any employee of this Legislature, whether it has merit or not, it's really hard to have that complaint contained until such time the Ethics Committee finds that, yeah, Senator so-and-so is a habitual drunkard. So what happens throughout that whole time, Madam Speaker, if in the event the individual is found not guilty, or the complaint lodged against them has absolutely no merit and it's not... they can't confirm that it's true? The damage would have already been done. These complaints could be lodged during an election season. We have an election coming up, a gubernatorial election, we have senatorial elections. In our case, senatorial election, I just want to say for the record that this amendment is not any attempt to discourage people from filing any complaints against any member of the Legislature or any employee of the Legislature. But what this amendment simply says is, you must at least have some kind of verification that you believe that the statement is true. And under penalty of perjury, if in the event someone files a complaint and says, "This is what I believe to be true," under penalty of perjury, if the complaint is not upheld, then that person will not be prosecuted because that person would have provided some kind of evidence at the time they submitted the complaint, like, "I believe Senator so-and-so is a habitual drunkard because I always see him outside of his house drinking." So at least you have some kind of standard and some basis to bring these complaints forward. But to just stand up and say, "I'm concerned that this amendment might discourage people from filing complaints," sometimes, you know, I'd like to swim against the tide, and even though I can agree with that kind of argument, I just have to look at the bigger picture and what would happen if we don't pass this amendment, and what it would do for current members of the Legislature and employees, what it would do for future members of the Legislature, and what it would really do to put a lot of fodder in this court of public opinion. And I just rise to caution our colleagues, I just rise that we have some kind of pause and think about the ramifications of not passing this amendment, and to really hold our people to some kind of standard that we'd like to hold ourselves to. Because there's a lot of inconsistencies in what elected officials... Someone can say that they've done something... Someone can file a complaint against a member of the Legislature, but the standard to which we can prove libel or slander is much higher than someone going and saying, "Tan Maria did this," or "Tun Jose is such a bad person," and they can malign that person, but the standard for John Doe is much lower than a standard for an elected official. Because the theory is, we're in a politically charged environment, and so we subjected ourselves to this kind of environment, and so people can say whatever the heck they want to say about us, and that's fine. But when you allow for a process which validates those kinds of allegation is where I have a lot of concern. And I'm asking our colleagues to vote on the basis of this amendment because of what it would do to bring some semblance of credibility for those who really want to file complaints against any member of the Legislature. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. I think there was an objection. No? Okay, so there... okay. So there being then no objections, so I literally convinced you. On the motion, Senator Respecho, then to send Resolution Number 340, the third reading file?
So moved, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objections, then so ordered. We do have one more bill on the second reading file, that's Bill 384. Senator Guthers, you have an amendment that you passed out? Okay, so... So a motion then to send Bill 384 to the third reading file, without any objections, then so ordered. All right, on the remaining bills then on your desk. Senator Respecho, a motion also to go down, back down to the voting file.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Now, as I say in the House, as I move that we proceed to the voting file.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. We are now in Bill Number 103.
Bill Number 103 COR, substituted by the Committee on Rules, Natural Resources, and Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, and amended on the floor, introduced by Thelo Tategree, Judith T. Wampat E. D.D., Adolfo B. Palacios Senior. An act to amend Sections 51202A and 51207 of Article II, Chapter 51 of Title X Guam Code Annotated, and amend Section 3401.184 of Title Section of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to doubling the penalties for littering for violators that discard cigarettes from vehicles when the fire danger rating is high.
Okay, roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinan? Senator Respecho? Senator Tategree? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
We lost a couple members. While they're tallying the votes, I move that Senators Agun and Munia Barnes be excused from voting.
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. You can continue to call Senator Pangilinan. Senator Espaldon?
Oh, Espaldon, too.
Senator Pangilinan?
You know, I sit in a street for five hours, and then nothing, and I really pick up trash. It's a way of measuring, I understand it's a condition for you. It's a way of measuring. You sit in a mall, or you do your service for four hours, and come back with a sandwich bag of the trash, and you do this five hours.
Senator Espaldon? Bill Number 103. 103 received nine yays, two nays, and four excused absences. So Bill Number 103-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 162-30?
Bill Number 162-30 COR, substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens, and amended on the floor, introduced by Ray Tenorio, E. J. V. Calvo, Adolfo B. Palacios Senior. An act to add a new Article II to Chapter 20 of Title X Guam Code Annotated, relative to the creation of an online warrant repository registry.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinan? Senator Respecho? Senator Tategree? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Bill Number 162-30 received 10 yay votes, 1 nay, 4 excused absences. Bill Number 162-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 316-30?
Bill Number 316-30 LS, introduced by TC Ada, A. B. Palacios Senior, F. F. Blas Junior. An act to add new definitions SS, TT, and UU to Section 1102 of Chapter 1, Title 16, to add new sections 3102.2, 3102.3, and 3102.4 to Chapter 3, Title 16, and to add a new section 6233 to Article II, Chapter 6, Title 41, all of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing charges and compensation for Department of Revenue and Taxation examiners who perform off-duty examinations.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinan? Senator Respecho? Senator Tategree? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat? Senator Espaldon? Bill Number 316-30 received 11 yays and 4 excused absences. Bill Number 316-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 359? 359?
Bill Number 359-30 COR, amended on the floor, introduced by Judith P. Guthers, DPA. An act to add new subsections A, B, and C to Section 76212 of Article II, Chapter 76 of Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to prohibiting the transfer of all prehistoric and historic properties, antiquities, and objects owned by the people of Guam and in the inventory of the government of Guam with all legislative concurrence.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinan? Senator Respecho? Senator Tategree? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Bill Number 359-30 received 11 yay votes and 4 excused absences, therefore, Bill Number 359-30 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 340-30?
Madam Speaker, I move that this be... this resolution be voted without engrossment, notwithstanding...
On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. Resolution Number 340-30?
Resolution Number 340-30 COR, introduced by Judith P. Guthers, DPA, relative to adding a new section 29.04.05 to Rule 29 Code of Ethics and Standards for the Legislative Branches of Feminina Trinta, na les rituangoan orden arreglamento.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Frank Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Espaldon? Senator Guthers? Senator Munia Barnes? Senator Palacios? Senator Pangilinan? Yes, Resolution 340. Senator Respecho? Senator Tategree? Senator Tenorio? Speaker Wampat?
Yes.
Resolution Number 340-30 received 10 yays, 1 nay, and 4 excused absences. Resolution Number 340-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 358-30?
Bill Number 358-30 COR, substituted by the author and amended on the floor, introduced by Thea Munia Barnes, J. T. Wampat E. D.D., and E. J. V. Calvo. An act to repeal and reenact Chapter 18 of Title X of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Barbering and Cosmetology Act of 2010.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada? Senator VA Ada? Senator Agun? Senator Blas? Senator Calvo? Senator Cruz? Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinan. Senator Rispio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Madam Speaker.
Yes.
If I may, I mean, considering that I voted on this bill and it dawned upon me that my wife is in the industry, and she also sits on the Board of Cosmetology, I guess I would have to perhaps retract my vote. Due to, you know, as, so that there is no appearance of impropriety.
We didn't announce it yet, so.
Whatever hair I have, she does do. But yeah, no, I think in all, you know, just for there to be no appearance of impropriety on my part, because my wife is a cosmetologist and she does serve on the board, I would like to.
Can I write, I don't object to anyone recusing themselves, but we just went through this Committee on Ethics Standards in hearing, and the committee counsel determined that if it's legislation that affects an entire group of people or a community, just like in the case of the Port Authority, it was a bill that would give certain raises to Guam Federation members, but at the same time gave raises to non-Guam Federation of teachers, members at the port. And so they concluded that Senator's action in that particular instance does not violate a conflict of interest provision. So I, I don't, I like that we're being cautious, but sometimes we're overly cautious in the sense that we're asking to be excused for situations where we're not, like the case of Cola. It affects an entire class, and although some senators may be a direct beneficiary of that, to vote on that bill is not a conflict of interest. And that's, that's why we went through this whole Committee on Ethics process. That's the rule that we adopted.
If Madam Speaker can deem that there is no conflict in the situation, I would like my vote to then stand. Because I have looked at legislation, and there is a lot of good, good legislation, good statutes in this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Your vote will stand then. Bill number 358-30 received 11 yay votes and four excused. Bill number 358-30 is duly passed by this body. Senator, oh, wait, Bill number 351 without engrossment, there are no amendments.
So moved, Madam Speaker.
351.
Bill number 351-30 COR. Introduced, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land. Introduced by V.C. Pangilinan, B.J.F. Cruz. An act to add a new Article 3 of Chapter 36 to Title 18 Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Item 5 to Section 10104A of Chapter 10 Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of a Secure and Fair Enforcement for Mortgage Licensing Act.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavall. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinan. Senator Rispio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number 351-30 received 11 yay votes and four are excused. Bill number 351-30 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 384 without engrossment. Motion, Senator Rispio. 384 without engrossment. 384? Okay.
No, 382, I'm sorry. Yeah, so moved, Madam Speaker, it was Bill 382.
And that motion then without, but they have copies as well, they can, yeah, without the amendment, right?
That we vote without engrossment for 384.
So that motion without any objections and so ordered, 384. The criminal record of a person seeking public office, so.
Bill number 384-30 LS. Introduced by Adolfo B. Palacios Senior. An act to amend Section 6114 of Chapter 6 of Title 3 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the criminal record of a person seeking public office.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavall. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinan. Senator Rispio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Bill number 384-30 received 11 yay votes and four are excused absences. So Bill number 384-30 is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispio, on a motion for 382?
Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill 382-30, I move that we, now I was saying the House rules, that we bring this from the voting file to the top of the second reading file, I'd like to offer an amendment.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
I'd like to then, now I was saying the House rules, move that we revert back to the second reading file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill 382, this is relative to transferring properties back that's under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. There was a companion legislation that was introduced, which had a multitude of lot numbers. And then you pointed out that the law requires that there should be one lot number per, per bill, so that way when the governor sees these things, he doesn't confuse one lot number versus the other. And so we could make a decision based on the merits of these individual lots. And somehow, even though that was what we agreed to, and then you moved to introduce this bill that mimics a amendment that was made by one of our colleagues. And so you introduced this bill, the public hearing requirement was waived because it's a similar intent and it was already publicly heard. And I just have some angst still, Madam Speaker, and some of our colleagues, that if you look on page of the bill, if you look on page two of the bill, it still contains more than one lot number. And so at this time, I move that, on your behalf, that on page two, line nine, that we delete the words "and" number 128 originally owned by the estate of Tobicho Ada Santos number in the municipality of Pidi, that we delete those words, so that we hold true to the spirit of the law, which says one lot number per bill. These things can always be addressed in the same manner in which you did through this expedited legislative process. So I, I'm offering that amendment at this time.
Thank you very much. On that motion then without any objections, so ordered.
So Madam Speaker, I move that this bill, 382, as amended on the floor and further amended again on the floor, be moved to the voting file.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
And now we say in the House rules, the obvious course of next step would be to go to the voting file, and I move that at this time.
So on that motion again without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that this bill be voted on without engrossment.
And then to vote on the bill without engrossment, without any objections, so ordered. So Bill number 382, no, Bill 382. Roll call. Oh, it's not working?
An act.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
To add a new Section 80105D to Chapter 80 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the transfer of properties under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam and to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavall. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinan. Senator Rispio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
Senator Rispio, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Could the clerk just quickly confirm, and I believe Senator Telo Tadegui was supposed to be the third main sponsor of this bill?
Yes, on the 382.
On the 382. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Bill 382-30 received 11 yay votes and four excused absences. Bill number 382-30 is duly passed by this body. We've completed all of the bills on the voting file, but we're going to continue the confirmation. So on the appointment of Mr. Frank P. Ariola to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Frank P. Ariola then is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Edward G. Antalon to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Edward Antalon is also unanimously confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Andrew Leon Guerrero to serve as Director of the Department of Public Works, roll call.
Senator TC Ada. Senator VA Ada. Senator Ogun. Senator Blas. Senator Cavall. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldon. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Pangilinan. Senator Rispio. Senator Tadegui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampat.
Yes.
On the appointment of Mr. Andrew Leon Guerrero to serve as Director of the Department of Public Works, he received 11 yay votes and four are excused. So Mr. Leon Guerrero is duly confirmed by this body. Senator Rispio. On a motion for adjournment? Thank you very much. So we are adjourned, subject to the call of the speaker.